Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our council meeting tonight. And as I called the meeting to order, just a couple of things to let you know you may speak if you'd like on the items that are on the agenda. If you do want to speak, please try to hold it to four or five minutes, if you would. And we'll have council prayer and pledge of allegiance to our flag at this time.
Almighty Heavenly Father, let me first say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and for the help you have given us to fulfill our chosen paths. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing these and our other responsibilities. As we gather here tonight, I pray for our mayor, for all of our city staff and officials, and for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant us wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare to the true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and right, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. All of this we ask for the benefit of our city of Aiken and all of its people. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I did say it, and I don't think I did, it sure is good to see everybody here this evening.
It's great.
Several wonderful things and got a good agenda this evening. Are there any additions or deletions to our agenda this evening? If not, we'll move on. First item of business is the minutes, all the minutes. Consideration of the minutes of the work session of September 17th, 18th, 22nd, 29th, 2014, and the work session and regular meeting of September 22nd, 2014. Do we have a motion in the seconds for approval?
So, Mr. Mayor, that we have...
I second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In the September 29th minutes is when we discussed the contract issues for the Hitchcock Parkway and stuff that where money was spent and working on procedures. I've had some email discussions as well as verbal discussions with the city attorney and the city manager. And I've asked for some data that they're going to provide me on the cost reports and so forth. So, I have a memo here which I've sent to them that I'm going to ask to be put in the minutes.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Show of hands then for approval of the minutes. Passing unanimously. Okay. On the presentations, we're very fortunate to have two this evening. First one is a presentation of the 2014 Strom Thurmond Award. The chief, Charles Baranko. Mr. LeDuke.
We're very proud and very honored to have our chief be recognized with the Strom Thurmond Award. Once a year, the state of South Carolina recognizes an individual within our state who has performed in an excellent manner throughout their career in law enforcement. Chief Baranko has been in law enforcement since 1993 for 23 years and has started with the city of Aiken and has a long distinguished career. And he was awarded this year with the Strom Thurmond Award, obviously after our late senator. And we'd like to recognize him today, even though he got this award in Columbia, we felt it was only proper and right to have Chief Baranko come forward tonight and to thank him and to honor him and to congratulate him for this event.
Chief, we're so proud of you and proud of the whole team, whole public safety team. And, you know, it's wonderful to have such a great group working together. And I know that it takes everybody working together...
Yes, sir.
...to be successful, no matter what we do. And you certainly proved to be a wonderful leader. And I think pulled the team together real well. We've had some ups and downs here recently, but I think most of everything is up now. And we continue, we want to continue that way accordingly. And we really appreciate what you're doing...
Thank you.
...and what you've done. And for the whole team, I know Beth is here too, and I'd like for her to stand. And we know who the boss of the family is, at least I do in my family. I think we probably all agree, man, when we do that. But just keep up the good work. It's been, really been an improvement since we got in the safe community. And you were right in the home front on that. And Ms. Price introduced it to you, I think, and y'all went up to North Carolina and looked and saw what they were doing and brought it back. And that has really proven to be a wonderful thing. And I wish we had time to go into that because some of you may not know what that's all about. But let me just tell you, it's taken the worst of the worst every quarter or so in this room. And they're sitting out here, 14 or so of them. These are people that are offenders in the worst way. And with all the folks sitting up here, not these folks, but I'm talking about the judges you know all the way from the bottom to the top of law enforcement people. And if you haven't seen that, it's an amazing thing. And they're talking right to these people, right?
Yes, sir.
And you're up there, talking to them and telling them if they commit a crime again, they're going to go right to the courts. It's not going to take two or three years to get there. And they're going to go right there quickly. And it's been proven. I think it took one of them maybe three weeks to get back in jail and for a long time.
Yes, sir.
So, I thank you again for all you do and for all the public safety folks, what they're doing. Would you like to say?
I would. Thank you in what the mayor's discussing. The most important part of that component is our community and the working relationship that we have with our community. So, hats off to you as well. I can't stand up here without thanking council and the support that you guys have given to public safety and really my family, my wife, and my public safety family too, the hard work that they do every day in and out. As Mr. LeWarr said earlier, it's with the good and the bad, and you're exactly right. But it's an honor to serve with public safety day in and day out. So, thank you very much.
that the chief has a new name in this town. And he's affectionately known...
It's been...
Is affectionately known right now is our praying chief. And the reason he's known as our praying chief is that last week he met with some new business folks that just established their business. And he wanted to, he asked them before departure if they would mind him praying with these three females and give a blessing to their success. And when he left, they said, "I've never seen a chief pray. He's our praying chief." So, he's known as the praying chief, affectionately known as our praying chief in this town. So, thank you, chief, for doing that for them. And I'm sure that they sincerely appreciated that.
Again, just keep up the good work. Public safety, you're doing a great job. And all we have to do is look at the statistics. We had some bad years several years ago, but things are really looking, looking good, as they can. We're always going to have some crime, and we know that. But I think it's being held down and really on the ball right now. So, thank you so much for your efforts. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and to its members of city council and to the honorary of the evening, Chief Baranko. On behalf of the Concerned Menaces Fellowship of Aiken and its president, Reverend Paul Bush, who could not be here tonight, we congratulate you on being awarded the prestigious Strom Thurmond Award. And we thank you for doing what you do best, and that is keeping the citizens of Aiken safe. Again, congratulations and thank you.
Let me just say, if there's anyone else out there that would like to say anything, you're certainly welcome to do that. Okay, we'll move, we'll move on now. Item two is a presentation of the champion award individual for the city of Aiken by South Carolina Recreation, Aiken, South Carolina Recreation and Parks Division. Who's making that?
First of all, I'd like to recognize Jeff Metz. Jeff is the new president of the South Carolina Parks Recreation Association. And he has a, as one of his first official duties as the president, he gets to honor one of our own here, Loretta and Mike Beckner for what they did. So, Jeff?
Mayor and council, thank you for having us. On behalf of the South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association, each year we honor a champion for our community. And that basically highlights a volunteer within our state that's done an exceptional job and really promoting quality of life within their community. And we have Mike and Loretta Beckner here tonight. In 2010, they came to us and introduced the sport of pickleball. And Glenn Parker and I looked at each other and said, "What in the world are they talking about?" But tonight, you can see kind of what's come about since then, this, almost this entire section over here, the Aiken Piccadillys are here in support of them. But Mike and Loretta came and met with us, and we started this. They play their games at O'Dell Weeks. Jessica Campbell has helped organize that group. We have nine indoor courts, and now we just put the lines on our outdoor tennis courts. It's a booming group. There's over 200 folks that register to play. It's really brought our senior community together, and now there's even a lot of young folks getting in the game and playing. It really offers an alternative to those that want to try something other than tennis. The last two years, we've helped do a tournament with Mike and Loretta. We had over 140 participants this year. We had folks from Scotland and 10 other states here to play in our event. And so, it's really taken off. And I'll say this just personally because I know them pretty well. They don't mind beating you on the court, but when you walk away, you feel like you walked away as a friend of Mike and Loretta Beckner. And tonight, we'd like to recognize those folks.
They'd like to say just a word.
Loretta and I gratefully accept this honor on a personal level as we've been very active in promoting the great sport with a funny name, and we're truly honored. Thank you very much. But having said all that, and more importantly, we want to point out that we believe this award is as much for the city of Aiken as it is for us. Without the support of all the staff of PRT, beginning with Glenn Parker in a previous life, I'm not sure if he's still here, Jeff Metz, of course, Kim Coleman, and Jessica Campbell, this award would not have been possible at all. Secondly, we believe this award is an affirmation of the leadership exhibited by those who represent Aiken's city government and who set the tone by encouraging their employees to think outside the box and maybe take a chance when it comes to furthering the best interests of Aiken. This is a wonderful city, and we're privileged to live here. And last, but certainly not least...
So, now I take over. Well, anyway, the city was so good, they gave us the venue to play, they gave us all the equipment we needed, but we needed players. And so, that's where all these people come in and a lot of people who aren't here tonight who came and gave pickleball a try. We could have never gotten where we are without all of you. You brought new players after you got hooked to the sport, and all of you have welcomed everyone so nicely and so warmly, and it's made a big difference to our program, to the point now where we're organized and we call ourselves the Aiken Piccadillys. And what I really, and I want to say is, so to all of our Aiken Piccadillys who are here and not here tonight, we just want you to know this award is not only because of you, but it's also for you. Thank you.
Do you have, do you have any more room down there for more players?
We have our crowd.
Yeah. Under whole business, item one is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Yes, sir. We have three appointments to make for tonight. Councilmember Mary would like to recommend the reappointment of Susan Hasslip to the recreation committee. And he would also like to recommend David Myers to the park commission. Councilmember Price would like to recommend William Coscany to the general aviation commission. So, for tonight, we have these three appointments, and council could take them one at a time or all together.
Okay. Thank you. Why don't we take them all at a time? We usually do. Do we have motions?
I so move approval, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, show of hands, please. Passes unanimously. Okay. Nominations for the next meeting?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
For the accommodations tax. I have a person to come off of that, so I would like to recommend Dr. Barbara BING.
Okay. Are there any others?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Liz Neal to the senior commission. I don't know whether she was here tonight, is here tonight, apparently not, but I'd like to nominate her for the senior commission.
Okay. Any others? Well, I have one, and it just so happens to be Michael Beckner who was just up here. So, he's going to be a part of the recreation department. So, we'll have that on our agenda next, next week along, I mean, two weeks from now, along with the others that have been mentioned. Item two, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the concept plan for property owned by University Health Care System located at 1021 Silver Bluff Road. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Yes, I'm going to read this ordinance by its title. It's the ordinance amending the concept plan for property owned by GMK Associates Incorporated, University Health Service, and located at 1021 Silver Bluff Road. Council received this information first reading at your last meeting. There are a number of conditions that we discussed at the first meeting, 12 to be exact. I'm not going to reread them unless you want to talk about anything specifically. This project originally came to the city in 2009. There was going to be three larger buildings. We now have one building that is there that's much smaller in scope, and so it's a reduced footprint. And for your consideration tonight, this is the approval on second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the concept plan for property owned by GMK Associates located at 1021 Silver Bluff Road, as per the drawings that they gave you within the package.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I know there's one gentleman in the audience that would like to speak on this issue if he would come up and tell us your name and how you fit in to this.
My name is Joe Roddy. I'm with GMK from Columbia. We're the architect, engineer, design builder for the project. This is Scott Ancidi with University Health Care Systems. We're really here to answer any questions that you might have. We did submit a update site plan based on the 12 conditions from the planning department. I think got that in your package in front of you. We had no problem with any of the 12 conditions, and will meet, or have met or will meet based on the time.
I do have one quick question, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot of land left over on this. Do y'all have plans, future plans for expansion, more buildings, or what's the rest of that land going to be? Just remain...
The only plan we have right now is built into the drawings you see right now. There is, there is a layout for an expansion of potentially a primary care practice to be attached to that. That is the only plans that we have for that land right now. When we originally purchased that land, the healthcare environment was very different. And so, a lot has changed over the last five years. And so, really, the move for the Affordable Care Act, it's really been more focused on primary care and access points. So, we changed our strategic plan for that land to accommodate that. So, at this point in time, there is no other plans to do anything with that land. You know, healthcare changes all the time, so we never know, but that is the only plans we have at this point in time.
Any other, any comments, questions? Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much. Do we have a motion in the second?
I so move. Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any discussion by council? Show of hands, please. All in favor? Okay. Passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for being with us. Item three, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 475 Town Creek Road and zone it RS 15, residential, single family. Do we have a motion in second for that?
Move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay. Second. Any discussion? If not, show of hands, please. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item four is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance regarding sign visibility and trees. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Yes, I'm going to read this by its title. It's an ordinance amending the city of Aiken zoning ordinance regarding sign visibility and trees. This has come before you on more than one occasion. We believe that this time, the planning commission and the planning department have it right to cover all the different bases. But again, that's subject to change once we get the next request in to make signs more visible. So, we appreciate council's patience as we work through this process. And tonight, we're asking you to approve on second reading and public hearing an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance regarding the sign visibility and trees.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second for that?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Discussion?
Just to echo what the city manager said, we've come a long way with this, and I think it's a good move. I hope it works. If not, I'll come back. For businesses that they be seen, so...
Always massage a little bit, can't we? Okay. We've got a motion in second. Show of hands, please. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Item five, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to approve the sale of 1143 Alderman Street Northeast. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Yes, sir. The title is an ordinance approving the sale of 1143 Alderman Street. This property and another property's in Crawson Park. Obviously, there is a lot of history and a lot of discussion. We started off with the prices being much higher. The market conditions have changed since we started with that project, and we've seen a decline in the level of prices as far as the appraisal is concerned of property in Crawson Park. We originally had an offer of $70,000 for this property, but the appraisal, which is what the bank has used for the sale of this, came in at $62,000. After looking at this and looking at the improvements that have been made on the property, we still feel like this is a offer that we are recommending council to accept. We have the realtor here tonight. The individuals that are hoping to buy the property are also here tonight, so if you had any questions. But staff is recommending that council would approve on second reading and public hearing an ordinance to sell property 1143 Alderman Street to Michael and Barbara Couch for $62,000 under the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement that you have before you.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Do we have a motion in the second for approval?
I so move.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Okay. Discussion?
Quick question. The previous house we sold appraised for more, did it not?
The previous house that, I know that the last appraisal that we had on 1407 Aldridge came in at either 65 or 68, 68.
I think it was 68.
And so, that one, right now, the appraisal is being done on that property. Again, that was in the spring. We now have a new person that would like to buy it, but that one has a few more amenities than this one over here.
Okay. All right. I just had noticed that this was less, and I was wondering what the...
It's a, they're similar, but they're less amenities on this one than the other place.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Show of hands, please. All in favor? Passes unanimously. The owners, please, stand up and let us know. Very good. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Dale Couch and I graduated from Aiken High School together. I'm very proud to see him purchase this home.
Anything you want to tell us about her during the high school days?
We have the microphone.
Remember, we're on TV right now.
I just paid him to say that.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Under new business, first reading of an ordinance renewing the lease with Aiken Garden Club Council for the dollhouse at Hopmans Gardens. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Yes, this, I'll read it by title. It's an ordinance authorizing the extension of the lease between the city of Aiken and Aiken Garden Club Council concerning the operation of the dollhouse located in Hopmans Gardens. In 1974, council had a lease agreement with them. It's been a good agreement. They have done a number of improvements, kept up the property, opened it up on several times during the year. And we feel this arrangement has worked well for the city in the past, and we would like to continue with this similar arrangement. So, for your consideration tonight, this is first reading and public hearing of an ordinance to renew the lease with Aiken Garden Club for the dollhouse through September 30th, 2034.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in the second?
I so move.
Second.
All right. Discussion? Show of hands, please. All in favor? Okay. Passes unanimously. Item two is approval of a warranty contract with rhythm engineering for whiskey road traffic signals. traffic signals.
This is a contractual agreement. For those that were on council since 2009, we've spent over a million dollars on the new traffic signals and a coordination of these signals from all the way at South Boundary to the Powderhouse Road area. We had a contractual agreement at that time with Rhythm Engineering to help maintain those signals. Obviously, there's a lot of coordination and computerized work that goes into this. I started getting some calls shortly after I came back to the city concerning some issues with that signalization, and found out that the engineering agreement that ended in May, for whatever reason, was not renewed. And so, we're asking tonight that council renew this agreement. We could do it for one year or three years. We're recommending three years, and the reason three years is it then guarantees the price for this work over the next three years, although if you divided that number of $38,250 by three, you know, it's just a multiplication method. We do get paid back by the state of South Carolina for help with maintaining all the signals. It's over $100,000 is what we receive now, not just for these 17, but for all the signals within the City of Aiken. So, there is some reimbursement for this money. We have included the budget account that it would normally have come from. $2150 is the maintenance operation in public safety, and they're over this. And so, we are asking for your consideration tonight, the approval of a warranty contract with Rhythm Engineering for maintenance of the traffic signals at 17 intersections along Whiskey Road corridors at a cost of $38,250 for a three-year period.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion in second for approval?
So moved.
Is that a second?
No, I have had a question.
A second.
Okay, we've got a second, yes.
Rhythm Engineering is out of Kansas?
That is correct.
There's no place local that does this kind of thing?
This is a very unique conceptual thing that, on the signal coordinations using the cameras, when we built it, we were the first in the state of South Carolina. So, it's, it is a unique thing. We could certainly, in the future, look for someone, but since they are the ones that helped to develop and to coordinate the installation of this, we felt it's best at this point in time to stay with them.
Do they have a local representative that tells them when the situation changes that they can make changes to their algorithms?
I'll let our chief answer that question.
Are they purely handling the signaling, or are they?
Basically, everything is done remotely, and again, everything's tied into a central computer system, and then remotely is how they work on things.
But you referenced maintaining the signals themselves. I mean, they aren't the ones that come out and repair it when it's.
No, not the actual signal itself. This is the coordination of it all.
Yeah, it's just the changing of the colors, changing of the lights.
Changing the color.
There's the software that's involved and that kind of stuff. As to Mr. DeWort's question, there's not a local representative. They monitor our system from Kansas, actually, and that's it. They can dial into our system, fix any of the programming problems that we have with a phone call. Of course, a little behind time, behind time sometimes, an hour or so behind us, but we've had very good cooperation with this project.
Thank you.
Chief, if I'm not mistaken, we, Columbia County had this a couple of years ago, and we looked at that.
Yes, sir.
And to make sure that it was working fine with them.
Yes, that is correct.
And then, then we brought it to Aiken. And I tell you, there's some times, I would hope that most everybody thinks it's a good system, but there are times when you can go all the way from downtown, just about, out to way past, you know, the Red Lobster and all, without stopping.
When it's working correctly, yes, sir.
That's right. I'm sure there are other times as well, but I've caught some of those good times as well, you know?
And I wish we had the system downtown, because you can wait an awfully long time downtown.
The reason that the mayor knows that it works fine going from here to Red Lobster is that he does not speed from.
That's right. Doesn't everybody obey the speed limits? Okay, we've got a motion in second, show of hands, please, for approval? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, and the petitions. Number one, requests from Aiken Community Playhouse and the city to share costs of upgrading the theater marquee and projector. Mr. Ledoux.
We have had a unique partnership with the Aiken Community Playhouse from the inception of the building. I think it's still known as the U R S building?
For now.
Hope it stays that way.
And over the years, we have partnered with them on several different improvements, and it's been very successful. Again, we own the building, and we have a long-term lease with them for this building. They have looked at a couple of changes that they'd like to make, and we are in agreements with them. One is on the marquee. Currently, every time the marquees change, you have to go ahead and put up the letters, and it takes time, and we think we have a great opportunity. At one time, they looked at the marquee and said, we're going to have to take the whole thing down, it was going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, and instead, they found a way to go ahead and fit in a digital electronic sign in there that could let you know about upcoming events and what currently is playing there, and we think it would be a great benefit for not only them, but the city in the future, to let the public know and those that are, use the U R S theater, what is upcoming. So, that is one of the things, is to cost share in the price for this new digital display, which would be $26,752, and the city would be paying for half of it, and they would pay for half of it. The other thing is the projector. The projector is used for some of their events. It's used for a lot of our events, probably more than even theirs. And again, this upgraded projector would be cost shared on a 50/50 basis. So, we have these two proposals. The money would come out of the accommodation taxes. It's not budgeted, but it would be coming out of the excess funds. Right now, we have over $200,000 in reserves. We are doing very, very well this fiscal year. We're already about $40,000 over what we received this time last year in the first three months. So, we do have the funding available if council would be willing to provide these funds. So, the total cost that we would be looking at is $15,451 for our share. And before I ask you to vote on this or answer questions, and I know that Thurman is here that could answer some of these things, one of the things we also discussed recently, recently being probably a couple of months ago, was the possibility of allowing a nonprofit organization to use our space downstairs, the conference room, on a more continual basis, something that'd be good for them, and something that would be good for the city from a financial standpoint. And so, I say that because, not tonight, but in the future meeting, we're going to be discussing the further use of the space downstairs, maybe even the space upstairs with A C P or any other nonprofit that would like to enter into a longer-term relationship with the city on these uses. So, it's, again, it's ways of finding where we could save some money or make some money, depending on which way you want to look at it, better utilizing our facilities. So, that's going to be upcoming, but tonight, we're asking council to approve the $15,451 for the digital display and for the projector.
Okay, sir, thank you. Do we have a motion in second for approval?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of questions there, and I see Mr. Wade in the back there. All the discussion that we had about signs, I assume the lumens or whatever the new term for lumens is, this fits within the new sign regulations and everything? And how often does it change?
It could change a lot more often if we wanted to, but we do have regulations on how often it can change. Right, but if you wanted to change more often, it could, but that's not the intent. Yeah, it could be every minute, every five minutes.
Well, I just want to be sure that we're aware of what's happening here. The other thing, the projector, when somebody rents the building, the projector and all of that's included in the cost of the rent, or it's not, or it's not an extra for using the projector, is it?
Currently, it is not. It's all, you know, it's one price.
Okay. Is there an M O U or an operating procedure between the city and them and the key users, U R S, and?
Yeah, it's about a 10, 12-page agreement. I can't remember. I think it's been renewed since I left.
Has it been renewed recently? I don't remember.
Two years ago.
It came to council for review? All right, so it was just renewed? That, was it updated for all the groups and everything? You know, things change in 10 or 15 years.
Thurman, could you come up so we can catch you?
Yeah, Thurman.
We'd love to hear your voice on the tape, especially with the new TV here.
Do I need to re-ask my question, or?
Please, just in case, wow, this is neat. Yes, please, just in case I missed a point.
You have to say who you are there.
Yes, the question was, the M O U, has it been, with time passes, has it been updated to the current conditions with other users that have been using it? If there's some idiosyncrasms, in 10 years, something had to change.
From the side of the Aiken Community Playhouse Board of Directors, the memorandum of understanding was the same as was put in place originally. We did not ask for adjustments at the renewal date of about a year and a half to two years ago. I don't know about other renters. There is a, and probably Roger can speak to this better than I can, there is a rental contract that renters have to agree to. That can be updated without major change. If you want to add a fee, just add it. But again, that's not my world. My world is the playhouse side of the fence. But as far as the lease agreement, it was not adjusted. We did not see a need for an adjustment.
Is the lease agreement and the M O U the same piece of paper, or is that two different things?
There are two different things, and that's maybe where there's a little bit of confusion.
I guess.
We have a memorandum of understanding with the Aiken Community Playhouse that allows them to use the facility on X number of days. We use it like the traffic signals we just talked about. Red days, yellow days, green days. The green days, they have full use of the building. Red days, we have a full use of the building, and then yellow days are, we could use the stage, the front part of it, but they'd have their sets and other things in the back portion of it. And through the years, we've, we, the dates have pretty much stayed the same with the Playhouse on when performances have been added. The major difference with the Playhouse over the last number of years is the youth wing and the development and, you know, the changes that are happening there. But we felt, and again, I'm speaking for the former administrator, manager here, that things, the agreement we had amazingly in 2001 compared to where we're at, there didn't really need to be any major changes. Now, when we, on the green days for us and the yellow days for us, in other words, the days that we could use it, we have a contract that we work with individuals that want to go ahead and use the facility. And that has changed over the years as we looked at prices and hours of operations and other things of that nature, and that constantly we're looking at on a regular basis. But we have a separate contractual agreement with the Playhouse. We have a separate contractual agreement with U R S as to their use of the lobby, their use of the theater. They get so many available days during the year, I believe it was 10. They have never used 10. In return, generally, U R S helps decorate at Christmas time and do some other things they contribute to helping to keep the facility cleaned up in their area, and so it's worked out fairly well over the years, to my knowledge.
Well, the reason I bring it up, we've, as we've gone through my short time on council, as these agreements come up, we typically look like, look at them. Now, the M O U was, was an automatic renewal or just the lease? I understand the lease.
The lease, the lease was an automatic renewal unless the Playhouse asked to renegotiate. It did not ask to renegotiate this year, oh, last year.
Does the M O U have to come to council for review every 10 years or something? And I'm just curious, because when we did the one for the Friends of the Railroad, we had a timeframe, I think it was 10 years of renew or something there.
Since I wasn't here during that time, I really couldn't tell you if it had to come before council. Obviously, did not, because it was renewed.
We can get that information, though, and look at it.
I can, I'll check on that with Roger later, so, okay. Thank you, Thurman, that was my question for.
I could just say one thing. I think the last time I was here was to speak in favor of going ahead with this downtown facility. I've been on the board most of the time that it's been around. We often tour theaters from other communities. They come in and check it out, and they all leave drooling and go, how in the world did you merit such a great, great theater? And we go, take your town wisely, so. We know we're very lucky here in Aiken.
We want to keep it that way.
Let me just add, by Thurman's there, that we have needed for some time that upgrade of the marquee and projector, and if you want to see something interesting is to come out and see Vivian with that 1940s pole stick, and she's up there removing the letters and putting letters up to make it current with the event coming in. So, we're happy to be in the 21st century coming up.
Vivian would appreciate 10 or 15 years from now not having to do that, I'm sure.
And I wish I was here when the M O U did come back up for renewal, because I would have brought it before council, not for any changes, but just to recognize the fact that we have such a great relationship and been able to work through some, I mean, anytime you enter into a marriage with another agency, a nonprofit, and with a for-profit, there, it's fraught with some pitfalls that you could get into. And we did have some pitfalls, but we were able to work them out and to take care of the details, and the relationship from, at least while I was here as city manager, was an excellent relationship, and I'd like to thank Thurman and the board and everybody else with them, and I'm happy to hear that it did get renewed, because it has worked well.
It's been a model relationship from, I think, everybody's point of view.
It really was. Major partnership made that happen.
The only concern, Thurman, I think is aware of this, is utilization of the theater, which is why we're looking at this facility downstairs in terms of maximizing the use of the theater space, because there are more people that would like to have events, but then we've got the stage set up for rehearsal and those kinds of things. So, depending on what we do downstairs, that will allow some relief from theater, I think.
It's possible, although, as Roger has said, there are contractual dates that allow the Playhouse to have two weeks before production, but we're very good about shopping around dates, as long as we don't have a show on stage for that period, so. It's just back and forth cooperation that's really made this work extremely well.
It amazes me how many productions you have and how wonderful they are.
It's a monstrously busy organization and thriving, and again, thanks in large part to the city's support and cooperation with us.
Who's the young gentleman you have with you?
Oh, this is Jimmy Moore, a locally famous name. Jimmy is our technical facilities manager this year and doing a great job.
Well, thank you, Thurman, so much. Thank you both for what you do.
Thank you, Thurman.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any other discussion? Show of hands, please, all in favor, passes unanimously. Okay, item two, approval to unfreeze employee positions.
These positions were in the previous year's budget, I mean, they've been in the budget for a long time, but these are vacancies that have occurred within the last few months, and so we have several in front of you. I apologize to staff, I know that there was a couple that came through last week that didn't get on the list. You haven't gotten emailed back to me saying, I'm sorry, so, I'm sorry. But we'll get those out at the next meeting for any other positions that have come open. But before you tonight is the accountant, facility assistant, maintenance mechanic, vehicle operators for various divisions here.
Okay, do we have a motion in second for approval?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Okay, discussion?
Just, just one. Just, just one sort of unrelated comment. Today's headlines in the Aiken Standard weren't very good as far as the City of Aiken is concerned, we're gonna lose our long-term manager, Lisa Hall. And you may recall, we discussed several months ago, concerns about her departure and the workload that she has. I, I would just suggest that we really work hard to get a suitable replacement, because that's a one-man shop, a one-person shop, one-girl shop.
Yeah, and one of the things that we have discussed as a staff is bringing someone in early before she leaves, because there, we don't want there to be a gap in this whole operation. For those of you that have daughters that have gotten married, that's a big deal when there's a wedding going on, and of course, the events at the Hall of Fame, the storytime, and the Christmas at Hope, but there are just a number of things, and so we have talked to Lisa already about trying to fill that position a couple of months early to have that new person to shadow her for some time.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right.
I do have one other, when you, you just mentioned you're gonna be bringing some others to Council next time. Back in May of twenty twelve, we authorized five new positions for, I guess, E and U now, and they were to be working, fixing water pipes and so forth. Are those in the system now?
You mean, are they still working, water system?
Well, I just wondered if, if they, when I looked at the CAFI report, I didn't see five included in the, the numbers.
George, please, please come up here.
I should try, George.
I know you don't want to be on TV, but everybody else wants to see your smiling face.
The process that we go through is we hire from temporary agencies to fill the positions, and then when we have had them employed for a certain amount of time, we are convinced that they will be good applicants, then we process them into the workforce. So we have them on, we have people on board, they just aren't hired permanently into the city yet.
So they don't show on the CAFI report?
They don't show on those reports until we, but we do have the bodies in place.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you, George.
Also, before you leave, George, George?
Sure.
Stay up here for a second, just in case I say this incorrectly. In the new budget, the budget we're currently in presently, there are several positions that George had asked to fill concerning some additional crews, to look at some of our sewer systems and water systems, and to be fixing some of these areas, and to do more exercising of the valves, and those types of things that have not been filled, and at some point in time, we'll be bringing those back to Council. Number one, wanted to wait and see how our water and sewer revenue was gonna come in during the summer months, and that has come in excellent rate.
Because those charge the water and sewer fund.
And those will be charged with water and sewer fund, but those have not been filled, because we have not released those from the new budget.
Thank you.
That's correct?
Yes, please. Okay, great.
Okay, thank you, George. Okay, show of hands, please, all in favor of this approval of the lease? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, annual report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just want to, you, you have an annual report, I'm sure you've all read through it, and you got probably marked up a number of questions already to ask us from this annual report, but in all seriousness, I, I do want to thank staff. This normally would have gotten to you probably a month, two months earlier, and I'll take all the blame for it being so late, just, we've had some other issues that we've been dealing with, so. A lot of work, a lot of time has been spent by the departments in, in getting this to you, and there is a lot of great information, so I'd like to just really thank staff for everything you do, day in, day out, and especially for the annual report.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, staff, for all you do, every day. Okay, anything else?
Just one comment, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Dick.
I just want to, again, thank the Aiken Standard for their work in getting this proceeding televised. I think it's a, it's an effort to bring our proceedings to the public. We meet at a difficult time for a lot of people to attend the meeting, so this will be an opportunity for many people to see what we do and how we do it, and I hope we get some feedback. I hope the feedback is positive, but I hope the people appreciate our effort to become more and more transparent. We're one of the leading municipalities in the state in transparency, and this is another step in that direction, so thanks to all who made this happen, including staff.
Absolutely, thank you.
One comment, Mr. Mayor, on issues and updates, and I think Mr. Ledoux covered it. One, you said, once we get the bids in from the Citizens Park fencing, you would bring that to us for edification if we needed anything on financing. How about the Rythatch Stables? That's out of capital three.
There, there are a number of projects, and we'll give you a recap. In fact, while we took our break, I, I had a moment to think about it. We'll probably have a work session next time at six forty-five, and during that work session, we will take all these projects that have had inter-fund loans and other ones that we feel will happen sometime between now and February, or even now and May. Again, we could get funds from the county in cycle at November, February, and May to you, so you could see the listing, because it's also gonna have the alley in there, there's gonna be some money spent on the senior youth center, and there's some other projects that we'll be also looking at. So we'll try to outline how much and when the money needs to be borrowed and at what time.
I think that would, I think that's important to, because the cash flow, we need to keep up with there.
Absolutely.
And also, the, be sure that the projects we're doing pretty well follow the order that we said they would, that type thing.
So we'll have a work session a little bit early to recap the CPST funds at the next meeting.
Three only, because we've already taken care of two.
That gives fifteen minutes.
Yeah, it, I said six forty-five. If, if the mayor says that may not be long enough, there's not that much that we're gonna be on this, this one piece of paper that we'll be reviewing.
It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be more than two or three jobs, that's all the things on the schedule.
Hundred minutes, a sheet of paper. Okay, that's it? We start it, Jack.
Thank you.